Let's call ourselves to order. It's Thursday, January 14th. This is City Planning Board calling the meeting to order. Need a motion on the agenda?
So moved.
I'm just wondering if you have somebody here for the form A. Maybe they'd like to get in and out.
Sure.
Is that you?
I'm sorry?
Are you here for a plan?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm here for the form A.
Yeah, but you might be here for stormwater.
I am, so.
Okay.
Then you had an opportunity to hold a brief that it was.
And you.
Does that have a second on the agenda? Follow those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First item is a discussion of stormwater bylaw revisions. I assume that's why the entire group of people are here.
We just had nothing else to do, that's all.
Oh, no. Oh, thank you.
It's free heat.
Free heat.
Thanks.
I'm not so sure about that.
Thanks.
I think somewhere I'm paying it in a no pack. Why don't you, Laura, why don't you just give us an update of currently where we are?
I've got a quick little summary here. Some bullets. It's not long.
I think in the future you're going to rename them something other than bullets.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Thank you.
Let's see down there. And gentleman of the storm water. Working group.
Sure. Thank you.
So I made a list of some of the major changes just to avoid going through this word for word. Start with the first one. The threshold that we've been using for what the stormwater bylaw applies to is 15,000 square feet of disturbance. And the working group is made up of Pat and myself on the town side, sometimes Josh Bowes, the consulting engineer that the planning board has used, and Mark, Steve, and Greg Morris, and Bill, and Frank Snow. So we're trying to achieve a balance between protecting neighbors and abutters and the town stormwater system, natural resources, preventing flooding, between all of those goals and what the development community feels they need to make this bylaw more flexible, to make it work for them. So as I was starting to say, the threshold that we had been using was, to a great extent, 15,000 square feet of disturbance. They felt like that was too low in that we were catching too many applications that were not really meaningful in terms of the stormwater impact and that we should really have a higher threshold so we would have fewer applications. Just as a point of information, since 2010, we've only had 34 stormwater permits, independent of subdivisions, common driveways, commercial development, things that you wouldn't otherwise have had. You've had 34 single-family homes. If you upped the threshold to 20,000, which we were first discussing, then you would lose about 10 of those. You'd only have about 24 applications out of the 34. If you up it to 18,000, you lose about three of them, and you still give everyone a little bit more flexibility on having a higher threshold. So that's where the threshold is right now. It's at 18,000. I think there's some feeling within Town Hall that it's not desirable to make it higher than that and to lose more control out of this bylaw. So, you know, the feeling from within Town Hall is to keep it 18 or lower, but not higher. There were a couple of other tweaks that we made here. We had some language about any change that would increase stormwater runoff. That was just too vague and too broad to really be practical. So we changed that to making 25% or more of an undeveloped lot impervious or increasing impervious area of a developed lot by 25% or more. That increase of 25% or more in an already developed lot, we already have that, so that's not a change. The only change is really going from this very broad language to something that would make 25% of a lot impervious. And that's, I think that's a pretty good threshold to use because you think about like a 5,000 square foot lot or a 10,000 square foot lot, you're not talking about a terribly big area when you think about the driveway and the house and a patio or a walkway. You know, you're going to hit that pretty quickly. So that was, that was one of the major changes that we made. There was also general agreement that DEP's stormwater management policy just didn't work for single-family lots. It was just way too broad, too inflexible, and we really shouldn't be using that because that's really intended to apply to commercial sites, subdivisions, you know, something larger than that. So, so that's, that's been taken out. We've got some language in there now on coastal storm flowage. That's something that the coastal people within Town Hall and Tricia had really wanted, and that is on page... That's on page five. And four and five. We spell out that we want to have no adverse impact from any work in land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is basically the floodplain. So anything that can either channelize stormwater and make it flow through some area with a greater velocity or have some other negative effect on neighboring properties, we want to take a look at that. And that's probably going to be practically everything that happens in that floodplain area. So, yeah, so that's, I think that's a good thing. We had had a 21-day review period. It just wasn't practical. We ran into a problem with a constructive approval on one application that Steve was involved with, and we just can't have constructive approvals. I mean, I think you're probably all in agreement on that. So we made that 30 days, and Karen and I feel like we can, we can work with the 30 days, and that should be okay. Frank, do you want a summary of?
Thank you. Sorry.
So we've got, we've got that. And then we had been requiring a stormwater plan, erosion control plan. We've been requiring a number of different types of plans, and we hadn't really been spelling out those requirements, so those are now more spelled out. I think it's something where the surveyors and engineers can work with one base plan. It's not like they have to redraw the plan three times. They work with a base plan and they just throw a few different things on it, and they change the title block, and that's basically all that that's about. And then the final change, which kind of runs all through this, is that we clarified the distinctions between what projects the planning board looks at and what projects the Conservation Commission looks at. And I think we wound up where subdivisions and commercial development that would, where the stormwater would otherwise be reviewed by the planning board, we're going to continue to have that reviewed by the planning board. But if it's a project where the impervious surface is, is, the majority of it is within the 100-foot buffer, or actually any part of it's within the 100-foot buffer, then it gets reviewed by CONCON. So it does expand CONCON's jurisdiction a little bit. And I think those are basically most of the changes that we made. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add to that.
Good summary.
I had a couple of questions on the summary.
Sure.
The language is for coastal storm?
Yeah.
Do we have a timeframe for MAPC to get back to us on that, or is it just out there?
I would say within, probably within a week or so.
Okay. I want to make sure that we have that. I don't see Water Resources here, so I guess we're carrying our bags over to see them.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're going to have to do. That's on January 26th, and North-South River is going to be there at the same time.
I guess what I'd like to get is written comments from both of them after the meeting.
I think they're, they're waiting to make comments until they actually have, so you mean after the meeting?
After the meeting.
Yeah, that's a Tuesday. It's two, from Tuesday. So.
Question, is the plan to get down the draft before that meeting so that they could look it over before?
I sent it to them.
Oh, they have it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because one of the things that they may want to consider is in critical areas, which is something that the DEP stormwater regulations cover as critical areas and that's, you know, their whole water supply, they may have some good.
Probably have to look at those monstries.
Too strict. Some of the upper monsts don't count.
You mean like outstanding resource waters, is, you know, those?
Or tributaries or, you know, anything in the wellhead protection, you know, anywhere in there, you may want to look at it a little bit differently.
Okay, well, we haven't really talked about that.
Well, then.
But if you have some ideas, it sounds interesting, I think we should all take a look at it.
Well, the other thing too is, I mean, if we pick 18,000 square feet as the size, I know that Karen pulled out, what is it, 10 different examples of ones that wouldn't be in it if we went from 15 to 20.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to, to look at those to see which ones we would like to have kept in and which ones really we don't have to worry about rather than picking 18 as a number? Because are the option that if we see a lot that looks like it's going to be risky to be able to keep that in as part of review? I mean, it might be slope issues, it might be some reason, rather than have a hard and fast, you know, size of a lot clearing that we base it on. I mean, I don't know if that's too hard to.
Well, I think when you're regulating, you kind of have to be really clear about what the regulation is so that people know if they're going to be under it or not under it.
Well, you agree with that part of it, but I'm just.
I mean, I did look at the one, I can't tell you off the top of my head which three were the ones that would not have been affected. I think one of them might have been the one on Linda Lane, which was pretty flat. 61 Border Street would still have been regulated because that had the slope. So if you want to take a look at that and get into some analysis of it, you know, you're certainly more.
No, I just think it's tricky, and I'm not saying I have an answer to it, I'm just wondering if we have looked at all of those types of things before we decide lot size.
Well, I think now's the time to look at it, so if you want to do that, you're welcome to go and let me to do that.
I don't know, I mean, we've sat through a number of meetings, there's there something, I mean, there may even be a large lot where it would be an epic lot that is in the middle of the woods, that there is a chance there'd be stormwater issues. So.
No, I understand what you're saying. I just, it's pretty hard to build, you're going to have to build a matrix that gives you, if it's this, then it's that.
Right, right.
If it's that, then it's this.
And we're trying to simplify it so that doesn't really simplify it, so.
So Laura, you were saying that if we, you did 34 stormwater permits?
Yeah.
With the, and out of that, how many would you lose of those, would you lose if you went to 20,000 square feet?
You'd lose 10.
And would that have made a tremendous difference?
Well, I mean, I think 10 out of 34 is, is a big percentage.
It's a third.
So all I can say is even with the ones that are regulated, like, you know, Bob and I know there's a group home that's going in, in the 20,000 square foot zoning district. And the people across the street from that group home called us, they already called us. And there are some problems over there because none of the stormwater system has been put in, but that's like not, not such a big problem as if that lot were not regulated at all. You know, that were not, because you've got a very steeply, steeply sloping driveway, you have land there that wasn't sloping to begin with, but it's sloping now because of the mounted septic and, you know, some other things. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I haven't analyzed each individual one of the 10, but I think in general, we get the inquiries, we get the complaints, and to be able to say it's been engineered, they know the stormwater's going to stay on the lot, I think it's very reassuring to a lot of people. And that was one of the purposes of this bylaw. You know, the sort of unintended consequence type purposes of it.
Well, you raised, I think, an interesting point with this particular lot, the 20,000 square foot lot, because once upon a time, it didn't have a slope, but once they put in a mounted septic system, it did. And maybe that should be some sort of a trigger, because I've seen these mounted septic systems on people's lots, no, nothing has been done in terms of where that water is going to go.
Yeah.
And that doesn't fall into any of this, does it?
Well, we talk about, we do talk about slope, we talk about rent, I'm sorry, let me look at this. Well, yeah, that's, that's something you could add to this if you're creating a slope of greater than, say, 15%. That would be another.
Regulation.
But, but the problem is, a lot of times those slopes are just on a small area.
Not the ones I've seen. They're huge.
On the septic system, so, I mean, typically, you could even take a lot that had a slight slope. When you build a septic system, you really create almost a level area on the top, so you, you do get a greater slope on the edge, but it's for a fairly small portion of the lot, you know what I'm saying?
I have to respectfully disagree with you, Frank. There's one on Hollid Street, and the slope goes right onto the property line. I mean, it just goes right, right there.
But so let's just say, I mean, and they all vary from case to case, let's just say that, well, that lot already sloped towards that area.
Did not.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I've got one adjacent to my house, and it's just a small little berm that's just there and takes care of all the water.
Well, that's the thing, is I think if you, if you capture most of these, you're going to have things like a berm that holds the stormwater on the lot. If, if they're not regulated, people just aren't going to be bothered doing any of this, and, yeah.
Can I ask one other piece about the difference between the 15 and the 20? And maybe you and Pat are going to cringe with that, but is there a way to look at those and catch the wiggle room that says if it's between 15 and 20, but it has no real significance, then some of this stuff can be waived? But then that would have, you'd have to evaluate that, that site yourself.
I think the problem with that is that everybody's going to be coming in and saying that it's not significant, and then what happens if it really is significant and we don't catch it?
The other side of that though is, it could be one that's 15 that is significant and one that's almost 20 that isn't. And with 18, you would have missed on both.
And then we have.
Well, with 18, we would have missed about 10%, 3 out of 34, less than 10%. If you go up to 20, you're, you're going to lose about 30%.
But I think Frank says if you have the flexibility to, if something else could trigger a review.
Well, come up with some, you know, I mean, it has to be a hard standard that, you know, you can say yes or no, whether it falls under a bylaw. I think we can't have, you know, I think it, it puts a very heavy burden on staff, and also if these ever had to be defended in court, it just gets into a real murky area.
The other piece to answer the point about, this wasn't a septic system, but it was a lot on Marion Road that the guy just had filled. It's a small lot, but we were getting bombarded with phone calls with silt running down Marion Road towards Pushen Side Drive. Tiny lot. But, and it's like, well, how do we make this guy, I think finally he said, you know, if this silt hits a drain that goes to the ocean, you're in trouble, but it was a tough one. It's a small area, but the person just was blatantly neglecting any kind of erosion control at all. And whose jurisdiction is that in? It was outside of the floodplain, there was no wetlands, it's a relatively small area.
But that whole lot was, was totally turned upside down, so that was well over the 25% threshold.
True.
So, you know, that should have been enforceable and would be enforceable under these regulations.
Even if they were 20,000 minimum?
Yeah. Exactly.
Because it was 25%.
Correct, yeah. The other thing I wonder about is the intent of the stormwater overall is to keep the stormwater on your site, not have an impact to your butters, your neighbors, you know, the roadway in front of your house, that sort of thing. Would you be able to put in something that was, as what you said, Laura, a hard and fast regulation that you didn't have to interpret, that had a distance from property line component to it? In other words, if I disturb within, pick a number, 20 feet of my property line, then I've got to get reviewed and I've got to, I've got to prove that no stormwater is going to pass over my property line, or take measures to make sure that's, that's the case.
Well, what, what we're doing is we're looking at, at development that's going to increase the stormwater going off the lot, and we're looking at rate and volume at the edge of the lot.
Yeah.
You know, we're not going like 20 feet off. Yeah, I mean, that's not really how these, these calculations are usually done.
All right, so you're assuming the water's leaving the lot already, and it's just the delta that you're looking at?
Laura, did the number that you looked at, that was just the planning board's review of single-family lots? That didn't include the single-family lots that went through Conservation?
I think the only one that I had that went through you folks was Colonel Mansfield Drive.
Okay, because we were both kind of looking at that one. Okay, because we've been a bunch of single-family ones this year, and it's kind of all over the map. Some were big and really didn't eat anything, and some were.
You know, that's true, it's a possibility, because Tichner, Tichner Court, 22 Tichner Court was another one that you guys did.
Yeah. Indian Trail, we had some, we've had a bunch of them recently, but, but there was slope issues or wetland issues and.
I guess I was looking at ones that would be regulated over and above regulation that we already had. So anything that was, I think 22 Tichner might have been the exception because I knew the people and I didn't want to have that, you know, that oversight with that one, and I handed that out to you.
All right, I have another question. You know, the septic system on one side of this, are you talking about empty lots that are going to be built upon? Is that what this is all about?
It's both.
It's both. So that if there's an existing home, and the homeowner decides that they are going to landscape the daylights out of their existing property, and it's 20,000 square foot lot, would they have to look into stormwater? Would they have to get a permit to rearrange the landscaping, to rearrange the stone walls, to rearrange? No.
Landscaping that involves additional removal of fewer than 100 cubic yards of soil material, material, or alteration of less than two feet of elevation, maintaining the existing drainage characteristics is exempt, so you don't have to think about it.
So if you did a pool, for instance, with a big pool deck, and it was impervious and all of that, that might trigger it?
It might if it was going to be more than 25% of an increase, but with a driveway and a house, I don't know how, you know.
Is it 25% of an increase, or is it anything that brings the entire lot coverage up to more than 25% impervious? In other words, if I've got a house and driveway and whatever, it's sitting there, and it's 20% of, 20% of the lot, now I want to put an addition or a pool or increase the size of my driveway, and now it's 28%?
Yeah, if it's an existing house, then you can increase up to 25%. So say you have 4,000 square feet of impervious area, you know, you've got a small house and small driveway and, you know, everything's kind of small, you can add another 1,000 square feet without any problem.
By right. Without any review.
Yeah.
But what if that's on a 10,000 square foot lot?
Well, we.
Percent of the lot covered.
You know, it's kind of impossible to make this thing perfect, so we try to make it as functional as possible.
I just wonder if any new development on a lot, which then takes a pre-existing less than 25% situation and, and makes it go above 25%, shouldn't trigger some kind of review?
Well, I guess we, I think we all agreed that we wanted to allow a homeowner some flexibility, so if they were at, say, 24%, they went up to 28%, they're really not doing very much. So, I mean, it's, it's, any ideas people have about, you know, tinkering with this or changing it, this is a good time, you know, to try to, you know, get them out, and then hopefully we can think about them and still, if we're lucky, make it to April Town Meeting and, yeah.
Every time you make a change in it, you come up with an example or potential example that basically undermines what you just put on. So you got to go with as big a target as you can hit.
Yeah, and it wasn't, there's pieces of this that really didn't change very much. For instance, previously, if you had a developed lot, a 25% increase was one of the triggers. So, for instance, the whole, like, Third Cliff area, there were a number of applications out there because all of a sudden there seemed to be a number of lots there that came, that, you know, had homes that people were leaving or were turning over.
A lot of small homes have turned into large homes.
Yeah, a lot of redevelopment going on up there, and the land is just so valuable that, you know, that's probably driving it. So that's where we are. Just to keep everyone on the same page, I talked to Nancy Holt about some of the financial issues around this, and what we're doing now is we're taking, we're giving the homeowner an estimate for the consulting engineer review of the stormwater. It usually comes to about $1,000 on a single-family house lot. What we're doing now is we're taking the money in, and then we're paying out the engineer. The Attorney General had said we really are not supposed to be doing this, so I had talked to Nancy Holt about ways to improve this situation. That's what Tricia had directed me to do, and the new direction is that I'm going to have to talk to Town Council about it because it's, it's tricky to do it and to do it right. We may have to have. We may have to have like a $1,000 fee for the consulting engineer and it won't be the way it was with money coming in and then going back out again. It'll be like the way a definitive plan application is. It'll be money coming in and we can spend it, but we can't give the balance back. So we're going to try to make it as close to what the actual cost is and we'll get the consulting engineers to agree that this is the way they're going to have to charge for these things.
So it becomes part of the permit fee?
Yeah, it'll be like a different type of permit fee.
What about surety?
They didn't want us to take surety for these things either.
Okay, so the performance is... We're trying to get people to actually do what they say they're going to do by means of fines or whatever.
Yeah, well, that's why we put the fines in here. You know, I understand, you know, about some of the problems with the CBO and all of that, so, but we're sort of stuck.
This is better than what we have now, which is no enforcement capability really at all.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Are you ready?
For you?
I'm always ready for you.
Absolutely.
I was born ready.
I just want to hear from everybody else first, just to see what input they had, but we did put a lot of time into this. Laura put a tremendous amount of time into it. Pat, I think, was at every meeting. We got a lot of stuff in there that I think helps the Conservation Commission and Pat do his job to put some more teeth in what they have to do and Frankie as well, and he's put time into it. And you're right, everything that goes in front of conservation for an order of conditions, whether they have to come for a stormwater permit or not, they're still looking at what's happening with the water on those sites. And obviously the water they're looking at is stormwater, otherwise it's not there. So they do get a review once they go to them on what's going to happen with the grading, how's it going to affect the wetlands, you know, if there's a neighbor down there, it's maybe not affecting the wetland, but it might be affecting the neighbor that's also maybe in the buffer zone or something like that. So a lot of that stuff we got in. We changed some of the slopes to make it so that it's, you know, not quite so restrictive as it was. I think one of the major points that the board's got to understand is that all we're really trying to do here, or all, hopefully you, trying to do here, is to change the bylaw itself to make it so that you can get together and change the regulations that are under the bylaw. Because a lot of the stuff we're doing here is just setting the table. The real big problem comes from the storm events that you have to design for. I mean, you're probably familiar, I had the site on Beaver Dam Road, which is a pretty flat lot, half acre, almost perfectly square. We don't really affect any neighbor and we spent over $15,000 engineering and getting approved a stormwater permit. This was actually the site where we had constructive approval, but I wanted to keep going in the process to see what it really is going to take to have one of these stormwater permits issued for this particular lot. If we constructed that system for the single-family, it would probably be about another $25,000 to construct it for the home. We have three abutters. All three of those abutters are not subject to stormwater permits and they can put all of their water onto our site. We can't put any water onto their site. So this bylaw, we've covered 34 people that wouldn't be otherwise in here because the rest in Concom would be in. There's 7,000 houses in town. We've covered less than one-half of 1% in how many years?
Yeah, but not everybody's doing everything.
How many years?
On that property, five?
It's been in for five, I think it's been in for seven, hasn't it?
Okay, well, I think less than seven because we're only at the beginning of 2016.
I think it's six or seven years, whatever it happens to be. What I've seen the local engineers doing is having a real hard time designing all these different storm events. So there will hopefully be changes. Once this gets through town meeting, we'll be able to make some great changes on what it takes to actually engineer these systems. I'm the one that's pressing the hardest for the 20,000 square feet. I know I've heard talk that some people might want to go even higher than the 20,000 square feet for these thresholds. Some want to go down to the 18, which, again, you talk about how many people you're going to catch, how many people you're going to get with this bylaw if we go to 18 instead of 20. I don't think it's about getting people. I mean, I think we need to watch what's going on with the stormwater in town and good engineering practices should hopefully do that. If you've got a mounted septic system, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the Board of Health has a regulation that you have to have swales around the mounted system in order to protect the neighbors from that water. Bill, you said you just did one or had one next to you?
Yeah, it's there.
And there's a swale with it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the systems are, and to answer your question, there are supposed to be swales around these mounted systems that will handle that water so it doesn't rush onto an abutting property without a stormwater bylaw. We still, they still have to design that way. If somebody has one that's not done that way, if I was the neighbor, I'd pull the plan out and find out why there's no swale there and I would go to the Board of Health and ask them to correct the problem because it's in violation of a local Board of Health regulation. So the stuff about a mounted septic system, I think, can be covered another way. Again, all the stuff that we put in here about the permit fees and things like that, from the developer's end of it, we don't have a problem. Nobody's calling me saying, hey Steve, we don't want to pay these fees. You know, we understand there's been no fee for this. It has to be an administrative fee for a permit because it takes time for, you know, for these, you know, women to get this thing done and it takes a lot of planning board time as well. So none of us had any real problem with that at all. Engineering fees, sometimes they're extremely high, sometimes they're okay.
It's going to be the same now for everything.
Hopefully there'll be some uniformity with what's going on as far as the review engineers are concerned and hopefully they'll all review the same issue, which is just the stormwater and not other things that have to do with the lot under a stormwater permit. Common driveways, subdivisions, all this stuff happens anyways. The big thing on this bylaw is really taking the burden off of a single-family dwelling as much as we can and still protecting, like Pat had mentioned, somebody who's at the bottom of the slope or someone who's got a whole site that's, you know, that's going in one direction. You want to catch, you definitely want to catch those people to make sure they're not pushing the water over the cliff or over the side of the hill to somebody else. And I think that does it. The 18 to 20, I mean, I already can tell you what happened. If they want to go to 18,000 square feet, I'm going to come in for a permit, I'm going to disturb 17,900 square feet. After it's all done, somebody's going to come in, they're going to want to landscape their yard. They're going to be exempt from the landscaping and they're going to come in and not change the grade by more than a foot and there's no permit required. So my big beef is if somebody wants to take out vegetation that's there now, they're not going to make a whole single-family home impervious, the entire area. But our particular site, we've got broken trees back there that are cut halfway off. It looks horrible, but we left them because I'm not going to build a $26,000 system for this particular site. But I guarantee whoever buys that house is going to come in and say, I want to landscape the back of it and I'm exempt right here. And they're going to be able to take those trees down, put in a lawn area or put some shrubbery in and replant. The purpose I wanted to go to 20 with is let them do it. I mean, I don't see what the downfall is from that. If you want to require that they have to have a certain amount of landscaping to replace what they're taking out, that's fine, but why shouldn't somebody be able to clear out nuisance vegetation and plant something nice? And that's, and I don't think the 20,000 is a big deal. I don't know how many of those 34 permits were for new construction or how many were for existing homes that went over a threshold.
Mostly either raise and reconstruct or new construction.
Okay, so, you know, again, we've gotten, we've gotten a long distance with this. There's still a long distance to go as far as the regulations themselves are concerned. And when it gets to that, I'm going to rely on the engineers like Greg because, you know, we're designing for a 100-year storm event, 25-year storm event, a 10-year event and a two-year event because somebody wants to build a house. That's crazy. I mean...
I think we're all agreed that we're going to be changing some of those things.
I'm just getting these guys' regulations, again, what are in place right now, what the engineers have to do, just the cost of it for the 34 people that have gotten caught in this, they're spending tremendous amounts of money just to prove what's going to happen in all these storm events. And the general consensus is when you have a 100-year storm event, everybody gets wet. That's what happens. I mean, the other seven, 6,990 houses that aren't subject to this, they're all going to get wet. We can't change that. I mean, by building a new house, we're not going to change what's happened in a 100-year storm event. So hopefully the board's going to support tremendous changes in the regulations themselves as far as what the engineers have to do, but just the cost to design these systems is more than what it should cost for the whole thing to be installed. First Parish Road, this guy spent almost $100,000 for a single-family home because he had a long driveway. I mean, and we're doing this to protect somebody one day in 100 years? I mean, that poor guy, I'd be crying if I was him. So I, I'm still pressing for the 20,000 square feet. I'd like to see the board support the 20,000 square feet. And if somebody wants to modify that on town meeting and they have a good reason to do it, 18,000 will be within the scope. But if you go to 18,000 now, you can't go to 20,000 at town meeting. So I would suggest doing it the other way, have somebody stand at the microphone and tell you why 18,000 is the way to do it. And I would stand at the microphone and challenge that because I don't think they know what they're talking about. And we live it every day. So I would go back to the 20,000 square feet.
You are going to hear from some other people on this. You're going to hear from the Water Resources Commission. You're going to hear from the North South River Watershed Association and that should be coming up very shortly, in fact, before the next planning board meeting.
About the 26?
Yeah, probably about the 26. So if we, if you wanted to continue talking about this on January 28th, I mean, that's, make a lot of sense maybe.
It makes sense to do that.
That's the only issue left for the size of the lot.
Any other comments?
That's really the only issue left, pretty much for now as far as the bylaw is concerned. I think we're 90 percent better than we were before. So I think we're all pretty comfortable with that. And again, that's the only thing I would go in and argue is just the size.
But it'd be that's the kingpin for the whole thing.
And if there's any special areas?
And the storm events. Storm events.
But if special, you know, critical area, reservoir area, those types of things, we've really haven't talked about it.
And just if I can through the chair, I mean, we do have a totally separate bylaw for the Water Resource Protection District, which does hold everybody to a higher standard, whether they're in Concom jurisdiction or not. We still have to meet that at the planning board level if somebody has a site plan or something coming in for that. Whether it's total suspended solids, you have to remove more of that. So it is in there, but it's not something that you routinely see.
Right.
But these guys do see it. So there are some stricter things that we have to go through and, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys deal with it all the time, on-site plans, subdivisions, common driveways, things like that. It's just a single-family home and you don't get the type of pollutants from a single-family home that you're going to get from larger developments, so.
Anything else? I guess we've got news and film at 11 and continue a discussion on the 28.
Yep.
I thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a Form A for 6567 Gilson Road.
For the record, Gregory Morris, Morris Engineering. This is a Form A plan to divide a property at Gilson Road. It was existing house number 65. We're dividing that, the house has been taken down, it's been demolished. We're dividing that lot into two separate parcels, Parcell A and B. Parcel A would be conveyed and create a new Lot 2. Parcel B would be conveyed to Lot 3. We feel it's entitled to endorsement because it's not a subdivision. We aren't creating any new lots here. We're dividing an existing lot and just conveying the excess area to existing lots.
Yeah, it's just taking an existing lot and dividing it. It's going to make the two adjacent lots conforming as to area. They still won't be conforming as to frontage. The only thing that I, we talked about in the Building Department a little bit and wanted to make sure that the owner was aware that previously, I think he had two, two separate buildable lots there because they were not contiguous. And one of those owners, I think it's the Bassin Lane owner now, is going to have one contiguous area and it was considered that because of the frontage not being conforming, they might have to combine those and lose a buildable lot. So I just want that on the record in case that does happen.
Sure, it hasn't, it hasn't been conveyed yet to all the same owners, so that scenario doesn't exist quite yet. I'm sure they'll look at that though. I'll convey that, absolutely.
And just make sure. Okay, but...
Questions on the board?
Sorry?
Just a question on the board.
The right-of-way that number two Bassin Lane's accessed right now by that 10-foot wide right-of-way?
Correct.
Are they going to continue to use that as their access or are they going to become off?
As far as I know, they're going to continue to use that as their access. Their sewer connection actually runs out to Gilson Road right now, so we've encapsulated 20 feet of frontage on Gilson Road, which basically gives the sewer connection to two Bassin Lane on that property itself. But they'll continue to use that right-of-way at this point.
Anything else? Questions in the public? Motion?
I move to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required a plan of land in Situate, Massachusetts showing a re-division of parcels 60-1-39A, 65 Gilson Road, prepared by Morris Engineering Company, Inc. for Matthew J. and Tammy T. Downs and John and Kathleen M. Denand, dated December 28th, 2015, as the division of the tract of land shown. It's not a subdivision because the lots shown on the plan have frontage on the public way of Gilson Road. The property to be divided will be combined with existing lots and no new buildable lots will be created.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
If I don't sign them tonight, I'll sign them tomorrow.
We're going to get the people on the CPC properties that are out of the hall. Yeah. Like three. Oh, all right.
This must be important.
Must be.
We've got the West End coming in over here. We got Weetabix in town.
And the South End.
And the South End.
I didn't know we had a South End.
The next item on the agenda is discussion on open space parcels. Are you going to lead the discussion on this, Laura?
No, I figured it would be the representatives of the Maxwell Trust or Frank.
For background, this is the same property that's in front of CPC?
This is a piece that's in front of CPC and we're just looking for the planning board's endorsement or recommendation that the town proceed to buy this property. There are two, this is Lexi's, we call him Lexi. This is Bates, Claprog, Bates Lane and it's the two lightly shaded parcels at the end of Bates Lane.
Why don't you give us the background as to who owns them now and what's being proposed to CPC?
Maxwell Land Trust owns them now. The original proposal was, we included a couple of other parcels in, so I just wanted to let you know that we've withdrawn those, the Townes Co. parcel and the Noonan parcel. We withdrew those. I do have a new copies of the revised proposal if you'd like those.
We get all for the fine work.
So the Munsey parcels were, it was originally five parcels, and it was the very first CPC project. Bill, were you on the first CPC committee?
None on the first.
First year?
Shortly thereafter.
Okay. So the very first year CPC hadn't accumulated enough money to buy all five of these parcels, and it was an all or nothing. The Munsey family wanted, you could only, we couldn't subdivide it. We could buy five or nothing. So CPC asked Maxwell if they could possibly buy two parcels, and CPC had enough money to buy three parcels, and with the provision that we could always sell it to the town later. And so we took out a loan, and we did that. We bought the two parcels and have been holding on to them for now 12, 13 years, and are now asking the town to purchase those from us and finish this Bates Lane conservation area. We've had, in 12 years, we've had nine projects that we facilitated and brought to CPC and the town. So we've been busy, and we didn't want to compete with any of the other landowners' projects. That's why we haven't done it until now.
Questions on the board?
This was before CPC on Monday night. It was really rather contentious. The thought in the beginning was to have an appraisal of the parcels prior to going, before town meeting. A vote was taken, and it was decided that we have, CPC has not voted yea or nay on purchasing the parcels, but if they do go forward and it goes to town meeting, then afterward there would be an appraisal. It's all, you know, pretty straightforward. You were there, Frank.
Yeah. I think that, and Bill, having served on CPC for a number of years, we discussed the pros and cons to having an appraisal done prior or afterwards. We know that the property can't be purchased with CPC funds unless, for more than the appraised value. So if it doesn't appraise for the value that they're requesting, then they either have to decide to sell it for less or not sell it. It's happened in the case, I think you recall, the Higgins-Megalister piece, where between their reconfiguring the land and then a floodplain issue with a brook, that property wound up valuing for less than what they had originally asked for, or what was appropriated at town meeting. And so we only paid, CPC at the time, I was on CPC at the time, paid the appraised value. In other cases, sometimes a survey would show that there was more or less land, and so that the change might be made, that the person got a little bit more or got a little bit less. If we couldn't, if the survey was done and they couldn't prove ownership of all the property, in the case of the Crosby property, a few acres wasn't purchased, so they paid less money. So it's just, it's complicated to try to get the appraisal done beforehand, because they almost go hand-in-hand with the survey, and the amount of time that would be required to get that done, it probably wouldn't be ready for town meeting, where once that money is, if it's voted, then you proceed to get the other necessary pieces done to make the transaction.
And there was also the question of whether or not these lots were in fact buildable.
Right.
And the parcel out in back that abuts Cohasset, and Cohasset is not interested in purchasing these parcels, because this is not in their Water Resource Protection District, that parcel is not buildable. However, the other parcel is on Bates Lane, which has been adjudicated as an unimproved way and not buildable upon the frontage or whatever, and that was done back in the 90s. So, you know, there were two schools of thought on that.
I have a sheet here, I think I had it the other night. I'd spoken to Neil Duggan, and he cited a case from Norwell from only a couple of years ago, where a ruling was made that, that could be built on, and there was already a home built on Bates Lane. I think Bob was in the room when we discussed that. So I think Neil felt pretty strongly that that piece that has frontage on Bates Lane could be developed, not as a subdivision, but at least as a single-family home. To say that the other piece isn't buildable, it's just not developable with frontage on Bates Lane, but if someone were to develop land, say, from Cohasset, it's not to say that someone couldn't, couldn't develop that land in another fashion, just as they developed Laurel Woods. In the, when the Maxwell Trust acquired the properties 12 years ago, they were not surveyed and evaluated then?
I know that one piece, I have a survey for the piece in Cohasset that borders Cohasset, and I don't think the survey for the, oh, yeah, well, it must have been surveyed, because there's a CR on Munsey, so, yeah, there must be two surveys.
On the Munsey parcels that were purchased by CPC?
There's no CR on these two?
No. What about these that were purchased by the Maxwell Trust?
There's a CR on the three that the town bought.
Okay, but not on these?
No.
But they're bounded by other properties, so that... Yeah, no, I was wondering how the purchase price was established 12 years ago.
Oh, through appraisal.
So they've been appraised, and so there's some baseline of how they might be valued today, based on market. And Cindy had a good sheet.
Yeah, if you look at the second page of the narrative that I gave you, it lists the financials for the projects since CPC started.
So averaging out the costs, and they've been increasing, which, you know, when Bill's and I were serving on CPC, I think we held to maybe 17.5 or something like...
I think we started out at 12 and ended up working our gradually to 17.
And then Damon was 20.
Yeah.
But that was over a period of time with increased in value, so it's still been a very advantageous purchase, I think, for the town, that much, that price per acre.
And the price that we're asking you for is, we haven't asked for anything more, it's just what we paid 12 years ago.
Right, okay, okay, good. That's, I guess, where I was going. So town meeting votes the, votes positively for this to happen? What's the process? You'll then get an appraisal and... Survey and an appraisal. CPC will then pay that appraised amount, or some other amount? They're asking price, or the appraised amount, whichever would be less, I guess, if they, if Maxwell agrees to sell it, you know, I would hope that it comes in around, in most cases, they've actually appraised a little bit more. Damon's appraised a little bit more. We expect these to... So what will the vote actually be for at town meeting? Will there be a certain amount of money not to exceed, or simply be okay to go ahead with the purchase? A certain amount of money not to purchase and not to exceed. Certainly looks pretty worthwhile to me.
I mean, it may not be fair, but what, on the cons side of this, what seems to be the argument? Don't we all want to spend the money?
I guess that's one of the questions, is, you know, a lot of money has been spent to acquire open space in the West End. It's the place that has been primed to acquire large pieces of land. I think maybe you're familiar that this at one time was a proposed subdivision that Toll Brothers was trying to develop, and that a lot of these folks had options with Toll Brothers, and when they dropped out, it was sort of a perfect storm with Maxwell forming and the Community Preservation Act, that were able to acquire these pieces and not get developed. Question came up a couple of years ago about this property, and the Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Commission asked the Conway School to do a study of our open space in this area, and there's reports in their conservation office recommending how we'd use this property, and the fact that as an unfragmented, large, open parcel, it's much more conducive to habitat for different animals. It's just a better, you know, we can, in our hearings and yours, we can save small parcels of land around a property or a subdivision, and it provides some value in terms of habitat or water quality or whatever. But when you can take a large area and have it unfragmented, you have a much better habitat, diversity, recreation area, is how it's sort of looked at.
Well, isn't that why the state chose to give us the grant? Because it was such a large area that we were...
The more pieces that we put together in a, in a large area, and then across the way from Bates Lane is both the Damon parcel and the Crosby piece, and as you can see, that's a large area of uplands that surrounds the south swamp. And you can see how much already has been developed around that, so to protect a couple of large areas of upland adjacent to the swamp made a lot of sense. What you don't see on this one is the Hubble piece, which is off of Indian Trail, between some conservation land and Indian Trail, that'll eventually be developed into some walking areas as well. You know, they've tried, Maxwell has tried to acquire property in other parts of town, and people just haven't been as receptive. I think the values, not to say that, I think the West End's a pretty valuable part of Situate, but some people might argue that being around the harbor or whatever is...
Pretty unique mindset for the people that live over there.
Yes, well, truly.
Is that a positive statement?
Yeah. It definitely is. Please, introduce yourself, and off you go.
Thanks. Lisa Fenton, 25 Crescent. You'd asked about what the cons were in the meeting, and I don't think it's a secret to most of us in the room, that the complexion of the Community Preservation Board has changed a bit over the last year, whereas originally, the tenet for community preservation was open space, you know, the conservation of open space and the protection of the land where we could. And in addition to that, we had affordable housing and historical preservation as well, and then later on, recreation pops in. But originally, we were really gung-ho about finding parcels of property that we could purchase and conserve, and open to the public for, you know, passive recreation. And that was certainly the idea when this piece was originally acquired by Maxwell, and that was certainly what we continued to do as much as we could on the board. But as you know now, a lot of the onus has been upon whether or not you could build a ball field on a piece of open space, or whether it could be developed for housing, or for, you know, I hear dog park coming up. But the idea is, it seems that the new board is much more interested in acquiring property for other reasons, not just to preserve open space. And that's been a little disturbing for some of us who are no longer on the board, who joined Community Preservation for the original philosophy of preserving open space. With the work that's going on right now on the 3A for the Public Safety Building, a lot of people have been coming forward who, you know, probably and absolutely should have been a part of the whole thought process up to this point, but weren't, now see all the trees coming down and realize how important it is to preserve some of the open space that we have. And who's to say what will happen if we don't continue to conserve the, you know, some of these properties that we have in the woods in the West End, whether they'd be in the West End or not? You know, it all can come down. Once it comes down, it's gone. We don't have it anymore. And this is an opportunity for us to maintain this acreage, which is just beautiful, and certainly a contiguous part of this almost 400 acres up there that's been conserved. And if we don't, it's a real problem. And it's worrisome that, at this, that the trust has been holding on to this land, as a trust does, to protect the property until the municipality can take it over. Now that they need to sell the land, to think that that wouldn't happen is pretty problematic. So we're here to support the town purchasing this property from Maxwell Trust, in the hopes that it continues to preserve some of the beautiful forests that we have in town before it gets taken down.
Now, would you address the question or the comment that's in there, saying, why should the town buy something that's already protected?
Because they can no longer hold on to it. It doesn't have a CR on it. There's nothing there to protect it. It's going to have to be sold. So, you know, certainly I don't know who it would be sold to, but it could be sold to anybody.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not advocating that, I'm just throwing out those...
I thought of a couple, let me go here. I'm almost Carl Berg, 26 Hughes Road. I was at CPC meeting the other night also, as, and this is all a learning experience, I haven't been involved in this at all. However, it seemed to me that Maxwell Trust stepped in to help the town out in a mode that was in conservation's best interest for the town. Now, to me, also, the discrepancy the other night happened to be within the application of which Maxwell Trust is asking CPC to buy the land, and that was checked off on the application, and help me out here, Cindy, for recreation and, there was another...
Open space.
Open space.
Open space and passive recreation.
Yeah, okay. Which to me falls into the category of leaving it as walking trails and whatnot. That's how I had interpreted it. And yet, the CPC board was really trying to take that, that properties, which sounds like 12 years ago, it was from the town deemed recreation and open space, or the open space parcel, and trying to make it ball fields and maybe affordable housing, which was not the original intent of the original purchase. So I don't know how that got mixed in, went to, for ball fields and affordable housing, when that was not the original intent, according to my, you know, listening to all of this. You know, just, what was done as a deal 12 years ago should be honored at this stage.
The other thing to think about this as either ball fields or affordable housing, a lot of people just look at a piece of land and they see a yellow line and assume it's a road, and, and that, you know, everybody can just get at it. When you actually walk up Bates Lane and realize how narrow it is, to think that there could be, you know, changes of teams and buses and all that sort of thing on Bates Lane, is pretty impractical, as would be to put an affordable housing project at the end of that lane, unless the people were survivalists or something. It's probably not the piece for either of that. And not to say that, you know, the money that we're asking CPC to spend is, Bill is aware, and Anne's aware, you know, the funding for CPC, every year 10% of the money that's appropriated for CPC needs to be put aside for either open space, affordable housing, or historic projects. And then there's a small amount of administration money, and then the balance goes into a fund. Because ball field construction was allowed with CPC funds, a very large amount of money, almost the same, has been, that's been used for open space, has been allocated for ball fields. Some of those projects haven't gone forward because of the shifting of the school projects and whatnot, but a good amount of money's been put aside for ball fields, it's just hard to find some, some land. Right. But a nice, you know, last night, or Monday night, the school department, I think... But a nice, you know, last night, Monday night, the school department, I think, came forward with a reuse of two fields up at Cushing. So in that case, it's not a large clearing project, maybe cutting back some, you know, perimeter trees and then two fields could be reused without having to say cut a large wooded area to create those fields. So, you know, hopefully they'll be able to look at reuse areas as opposed to clearing. Because no matter whether we were building a safety building or ball fields or, or affordable housing, the result that's happened at Ellis would basically be the same. And, and, you know, we know through our hearings that we've, that we've been involved in that it's not going to look like that at the end. There will be a building, there'll be parking areas, but there'll also be trees and a planted berm and, and, you know, stormwater areas that hopefully will have some natural effects. But it's pretty disturbing to a lot of people to see that happen. Any other comments?
I was just going to say that when we get into this, we started in 98, which was a few years before we were up and running. I was a lot younger than...
We all were younger.
Right. I'm closing in on 80 and our intent was to have this all under one green belt when we get into it. And I'd like to see that be completed and protected for perpetuity. Because I have, I can enter this because I have grandchildren, God willing, they'll have children and have a place to go and walk, recreation wise, it would be, the water shall be protected from this as it, as it is now and the animals will have a place to go. And if we can get this done and protected with a CR on it, this green belt will be this way thousands of years unless the, if it falls off its axis, then it don't matter at all.
Unless it falls.
Yeah, I find myself agreeing with this woman in the back here that I think the deal that was sold to the town 12 or 15 years ago should be honored. And I was at town meeting when the town purchased the first part of the Muncie property and it was sold by the Maxwell Trust to the town with the intent that the Maxwell Trust would purchase the other two parcels and put a conservation restriction on it. I find it completely disingenuous that there is no conservation restriction on it and now we're being asked, or we're being threatened that it'll be sold to a developer and the property's now to be built on. The purpose of the trust was to protect the property and put a conservation restriction on it. So I would urge anybody who's going to vote on this to do a background check on this and find out what was sold to the town at the time. If the town, if they would like to sell it to the town with a conservation restriction that they said they would put on the property, I'll probably vote in favor of it. That'd be a great thing. But I don't think the value is going to be anywhere near what they're going to need to get it done. So again, I stood at that town meeting, I went to most of the meetings beforehand and I know what was sold to the town. And I voted in favor of buying the Muncie property because the trust was going to buy the other two pieces and protect them in perpetuity. So I would hope everybody would do their homework before this goes through.
I can...
Mark. Mark Fenton, 25 Crescent. I actually was on the committee at the time. I preceded you as the planning board's rep, so I know it well. And I'm going to offer a few thoughts because I think this planning board and two of you as mentors of mine on this board, because, you know, I came on when you were here. I came on because of my involvement with the development, if you remember, of the master plan. We were through the master planning process in 2000. I was a citizen that got involved, realized how important a work that we do and that master plan is. So I'm going to suggest, this is one of those great opportunities for the planning board to do what it is empowered and, and really required, I think, by its, by its charter to do, which has helped the community think in terms of long-term planning. So I'm going to suggest a couple of things. One, the CPC was, the Community Preservation Act at the state level grew out of the work on Nantucket, their land bank model, and, which was about preserving as much open space as possible to construe because of the negative impacts of unconstrained sprawl, right? So that's where CPA comes from. Let's make sure we understand that. Two, we've used the notion of the trust model before. The Trust for Public Land, if you remember, purchased the Yum's Boatyard or whatever we now call that, held it for the amount of time until we could come up with the CPA money to purchase it so that we owned it. It's not uncommon to use a trust. In the very means that this, we're being asked to here, which is where these guys, the Maxwell Trust buys it, holds it for as long as they can, but at the point that the financial need is there, it's sold to the town and it allowed us to wait till a time when we were, had the means to do it, which we do now, right? There's enough money in the CPA budget, it's reasonable and this is a reasonable request. It's at a, a cost level, as best I understand it, that's appropriate per acre, to your point Bob, about, you know, sort of what's the cost per acre. The appraisal probably going to bring it in at a price very similar to the other land that we, we've purchased, the town has, to do that. My third point is a really important one. This is exactly the kind of protection that aligns with the very philosophical goals we laid out with that master plan, plan over a decade ago. It's exactly the kind of stuff, I could literally cipher here, I went and looked at the master plan to remind myself, were there places where we set these kinds of things? And Laura, you know, I mean, she's nodding because she knows, you could look at land use number six specifically recommends the use of CPA funds to protect open space in large contiguous areas to create wildlife habitat, enhance stormwater recharge. If you go to the economic development one, which says, let's do growth, let's try to constrain unconstrained growth on the edges, develop, direct growth toward village centers. The, the natural resources we're talking about, protecting open space, groundwater recharge areas, contiguous wildlife habitat, open space number one, you can, you can imagine the open space section of our plan very specifically talks about this, identifies parcels in the West End, specifically says, this is the area west of 3A where we should be protecting as much large open space. I'm going to make the point that the transportation element of our master plan talks about traffic ingestion and the traffic that can be induced by unconstrained sprawl and that containing development, not more single-family homes out on the edge. And, and even the historic preservation section talks about preserving historic landscapes. My point is, in any number of the elements of our master plan, we talk about protecting this kind of open space and doing the best that we can to protect it. And if this is a methodology where we allow a trust to hold it for a time and then the land that this town can buy it, we should. It does align with the price of acres before. And I'll make the last point, we know that many of the reasons we talk about this, whether it's the economic developments, the element, the transportation element, the land use, the open space elements, is because unconstrained development of low density on the kind of land that exists in the West End can be the most challenging to the community. It tends to be the most costly. Simple-family homes on that kind of land never generate the tax revenue that covers their, their costs from the standpoint of services provided, the demand, demand on the school and so on. From a purely financial standpoint, protecting that land as best we can, whenever we have the opportunity, should be a central tenet of this planning board's enterprise. It's stated clearly numerous places in the master plan. And my point in saying all of this is to say, you guys should not just vote for this, but that indeed you should take a leading role in saying, this is exactly what we believe CPA funds should be used for in as much as they help us implement the very plan we laid out over a decade ago. And you guys know, you've heard me say it before any number of times when we've had the opportunity. So that's not about this parcel specifically, nearly so much about, as this parcel representing philosophically where, where we've said as a community, we want to go. So, you know, my, my closing point is, don't just vote for this, but indeed take a leading role in changing the conversation about this so people understand, this is part of the bigger picture of how this community has to, has to think about its growth over the next several decades.
I miss your enthusiasm.
Yes, right. You need a little passion once in a while. Well, it really is though, I'm enthusiastic.
I don't think there's an argument as to whether the land is, is, should be purchased or not. I honestly don't.
Yeah, I hope that's the case. I hope you're right.
I, I look at it back as, I think, a commitment that the town made when the, the initial process came back out and CPC was on its system. Now, Stephen's point is, is all the conditions of the, that they put forward, they thought about our national trust, their, their handling of the piece of land, I'm not sure, it may not have been, but I'm not sure that that's enough to hold it back, so they're saying we shouldn't follow. But I think it's a commitment that was made early on when we bought the Muncie property.
I think the other piece that Maxwell's doing is they're offering, they're selling this to the town for exactly what they paid for it, when they, when they bought it. It's not like what they add...
More than what they paid for.
No, more than what they paid. They're not adding interest or administrative fee, all the things that if you went to another form of a trust, audubon or whatever, they'd be looking for, it's been a bargain for, for the town. And the nice part about being purchased with CPC funds, unlike the Ellis property when that was purchased, it, it's purchased with CPC funds, it's mandatory that there's a CR and then its use is clear. It won't be debated at town meeting years later or whether town money was paid, whether some money should have been set aside as open space and some gets used for other...
The parcel, not the school or the town.
That's, that won't happen with this, so...
I mean, as I go back and think back through his history, there's a lot of discussion on the Muncie property.
Huge.
Sure, it's been bought, what was the price and, I mean, there was a tremendous amount of it. I think that's done, said and done. Question becomes is, is there a commitment that the town made initially with the national trust to come back up and purchase this property? And there's, I can figure out the answer to you guys. Any other question? Comments?
Yes, just one last one. So what you're saying is that there is an actual commitment to repurchase the property that they bought from that original town meeting?
I believe so.
Okay.
You differ in that?
Yep.
I can think of a couple of other pieces of property in Situate that were owned by pretty prominent folks in, in Situate's past. Mrs. Leylaw was chairman of the Circle Society for years and I think of her homestead on Manlo, on Maple Street with a nice cape and beautiful pastures around it. And when she passed away unprotected, that, that property was developed. The same thing with Lutman Johnson's property on Neilgate Street, a fellow that worked so hard to preserve the North River. And then when he passed away, it was gone, not that you guys are going anywhere, but that property now has two or three very large homes on it. So to acquire this with CPC funds, protect it with a CR, to me makes all the sense in the world.
Any other comments? Let me ask you this question. You've got three members of the board here, one of which is the CPC voter. The question is, would you want to vote for, from the three of us or would you want to wait till you got the full board?
Well, you got, you got, are you considered a quorum?
Oh, we're a quorum. We're here. Who's alien argues? Just get arguing with either one of them. Laura, do you have any comments?
Not really. You know, I, I don't know what the 1998 town meeting actually said. I think it's, you know, it's a tricky situation because it looks like the asking price is way above the assessed value, so it doesn't look like it's necessarily going to come out the way, you know, it starts out. So, I don't know. You know, I, I think there's been a lot of open space purchased and it's great to have a big contiguous area, but I kind of think you already have that, whether you allow, you know, one, you know, I think it's questionable whether either of the Lutz's is buildable. So, I don't know, I'm not a resident, I, it's up to them what they want to do.
Okay. What's the position of the board? Your choices moved to support?
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of preservation of this land, one way or another. I guess what Steve is saying correctly, if I'm wrong, is that we feel the town shouldn't have to buy it, it shouldn't be preserved by the Maxwell Trust. And that was the understanding when it was first discussed in 1998. And if they had a conservation restriction on it today, there'd be no need for the town to buy it because it couldn't be developed because of that restriction. Having said that, it doesn't, and so it can be developed, and so my vote would be to do whatever it takes to make sure it's not developed. And if that means buying it with CPC funds and putting the restriction on it, assuming the cost isn't completely outrageous, then I would vote for that.
You?
It's very difficult, but it just needs to be finished, whether we agree or disagree, needs to be finished. As a matter of fact, I wish we could come up with the necessary funds because if you think what happened to, with Public Safety Center is going, wait until you see where the 250 units are going between Route 3A and Booth Hill Road.
And I think that's a great point, Anne, that we're not even keeping stride with the amount of...
We have no clue what that's going to look like, none at all. And who is to say that maybe we need to look into the possibility of somehow figuring out how to buy that?
Well, they've been approached, I mean, over the period of time, Mr. Livingston was approached...
Has he been approached recently?
Well, it's in the last couple of years. I mean, he, he made application actually to the...
Right, but I think it's time to maybe approach him again. There are some issues, serious issues up there.
Lucy, you were going to make a point?
My point is, I have to support this. I move to support.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? The motion is moved, is that we're just going to support the CPC article regarding the purchase of the land by the town. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I get your three votes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just, I did just want to add, if that's okay, Lisa Fenton, 25 Crescent.
Usually that's Mark's expertise.
That's why we get along. So on the CR issue, as a former chairman of Community Preservation, I cannot tell you the paper chain we have about trying to get conservation restrictions on not just this property, but all of the conservation properties. The only time we've been successful is when there's been a land grant involved or the, the water situation with Cohasset, we're able to do that through Frank, through our former conservation agent, through Patrick, through John Bowman, who was Community Preservation Chairman before I was. We've had years of requests to our town council and our town administrator to get the CRs passed through and there has just been one delay after another and eventually we'd just come to a bottleneck and then there would be new reason surfacing each time why we weren't going to do that. So please do not think that there wasn't an effort made over the last decade to get conservation restrictions on all of these properties. And anything y'all can do to help would be wonderful.
Was the problem that you couldn't find an organization to hold this?
No. No, no. We've had, not only had Maxwell offered to hold them for free, they've also, they also volunteered, they also made very clear that they were willing to have other trusts, other agencies hold the CRs if that was an issue. And it would simply get stuck, and Frank has more detail on it than I do in his efforts to get them done.
The process of getting the CRs and finding a attorney or a firm that would do that, the towns, we'll try to work with the towns' council to do that and that had changed hands with one time, I think, Koppelman and Page and then was with Toomey and Lehane. So there were some changes there. The Community Preservation went outside of that with some guidance from the administration. We obtained another attorney who's done the passings on a couple of pieces of property and, and his folks are busy, I guess, but we're making, through the Conservation Commission, because ultimately we're the, become the custodians of that property, a real concerted effort to work with... effort to work with not only Maxwell, but another land trust, a larger one, so that we can be sure that, that these properties are held securely, and with some guidance from them, and possibly a different legal...
I can remember contributing towards CRs.
Yep, and we're, we're, I think we're...
I think it was a property that we bought from Steve.
We're making more progress on that this year, along with the access. The other piece has been, the, sort of the criticism has been that lack of access. Maybe sure citedness on my part, my hope was that we could combine the parking area trailheads of several of the properties in one contract to save some money. Community preservation allocated some money for that, for Bates Lane. When we acquired Crosby Parcel, there's access there. The sale of the Crosby property was held up for a couple of years, which sort of stalled some of that development. And then last year, right after we passed with Crosby, I gave all the information to the town administrator, and then we got covered in eight feet of snow, and a lot of that sat undone for a while. But we're actually moving ahead, and Paul Scott, who's our former town engineer, has agreed to volunteer to help us complete the contracts for the parking and trailhead areas at Bates Lane and Crosby and Booth Hill Road this year, so that we're going to make some good strides to get those properties open and accessible more than they are now.
So we thank you guys for coming.
Thanks so much for your time and thought.
Thank you for your support.
Let's take a five-minute break?
Yes, can't we?
Karen wants to go home.
Karen's been here since eight o'clock this morning. He'd love to leave.
Okay, let's, then, let's, let's do it.
Let's move some minutes.
Okay, sure.
We need to have one meeting. If you wait five minutes, you can have one.
Right, give, give us two minutes.
Yeah, we don't have too much more.
Okay, move minutes per December 17th. Say second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Dwight, who signs this? Me?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
You just put a four on it.
Huh? Four?
Yeah. No, not four.
F O R.
F O R, four.
Oh. Who's signing? I don't know what to do here. It's too late, I'm tired.
There's the bills.
There's the bills. Move to pay the Horstley Witten Group, Inc., $480 for meeting with future applicant Seaside Situate Toll Brothers.
Second. Yeah, okay, read them all.
Read them all, all right. Move to pay image resolutions, $258.75, that's $258.75, for printing the new 2015 zoning bylaws, et cetera, et cetera.
Eye Visibility Orange?
Eye Visibility Orange. You can find it in the back of your car without any trouble.
My phone.
Yes. Move to pay Amory Engineers PC, $93.75, engineering peer review of Equina Path 31 Man Hill.
Second.
Aye. Move to pay Amory Engineers for peer review of 31 Man Hill, $93.75. Move to pay Gatehouse Media Legal Ad, $104.52. Move to pay Merrill Corporation, $585 for construction inspections for 35 Dreamwald Common Driveway.
Second. It's a big house they're putting there.
Really? Move to pay American Planning Association, Laura Harbordle dues for 2016, $485.
Second.
Oops. No.
Okay, Bob's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Return.